I have personally watched drug deals, never being part of my world and yet I can identify what is happening. And this is a shared story by many people in our community. I have witnessed people carrying baseball bats and sickles on bicycles hanging out on the street corners in the early morning hours. These folks aren't headed to a ball field and they're certainly not working on their yards. Enough. If the police needs our assistance, then that is what we need to have done. If they need city ordinances to aid them in their endeavors to curb these behaviors, then city ordinances need to be created. If more cameras need to be installed, then grants need to be written. Our police force is worthy of our support. But our citizens deserve to enjoy life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness in our wonderful town without fear. There are many concerned citizens that I represent their voices tonight. I would like the city council to provide a plan and or create a task force to address and combat this issue before it gets more problematic and before it's too late. We look forward to the expeditious responses. Thank you for your time, Seade.
Thank you. I'd like to reverse the order a little bit because no one else has signaled that they would like to address council. I'd like to invoke chair's prerogative to go ahead and allow Chief Matt Gregory to deliver your report this evening and perhaps provide some information to those who have spoken tonight. We also have Lieutenant Loudon as well.
I'll go ahead and deliver my report.
Sure. Sounds good. Thank you.
Just under the general report, the Citizens Police Academy that we posted over the course of the last six weeks is wrapping up tonight. For those that have participated in this, they will have the opportunity to continue with CERT training over the next four weeks. On March 26th, myself and Lieutenant Loudon will meet with presidents of the Black Student Union, International Student Union, and the Prism QSA on the campus of West Virginia Wesleyan College. And we will, the purpose of this meeting is to discuss protocol and safety when encountering police for students in the campus community in an effort to build mutual trust and respect. Also, on April 5th, the Police Department will partner with the Fire Department to assist with a TENS class. TENS is a traffic direction and management class. And this will be held for participants who are part of the security plan for WAMSBY. Assist them with their roles with the IP and the various events with the WAMSBY event. Finally, I'm in the process of closing out another proof year for our COLIA accreditation. At this point, our assessment has 2,232 attachments. That is in fulfillment of our reaccreditation efforts. As you recall, each accreditation cycle is four years. And each of those four years requires a proof for every bullet of every standard within the Standards Manual of COLIA. That's why there are so many attachments that comprise everything from our various reports, body camera videos, as well as our plans and after-action reports on various events that occur throughout the city of Buchanan during that proof year. Our proof year runs from April 1st to March 30th, 31st rather of each year. And as we come upon the 1st of April this year, we will be entering into our third proof year toward our reaccreditation, which is anticipated for the week of 2025. Also, what we conducting after we enter the next proof year and close out this one, we conducting a policy manual update after the 1st of April and which I will update everything consistent with the current Standards Manual of COLIA. So those of you that are on the Policy Review Committee just be looking for a meeting that will occur probably sometime mid to late April as we review those policies. Currently, right now, I'm looking at about five or six revisions that will come up with that. That brings me to the wider discussion. And first off, I'd like to thank Becky and Amanda for your coming tonight and expressing your thoughts on the matter. I appreciate that. And especially for Amanda, who's a resident downtown. I'm truly sorry to deal with these types of situations. I've had incidents like that. I don't live in the city. I live out in the county. Paul can attest to this. Less than stellar citizens that have lived around our house, especially because we've raised our two children and it's definitely not comfortable being around that. Luckily, it's changed. It's gotten better, but I can't empathize with you. I'm sorry that you're in that position. So to the larger issue, speaking about vagrancy, and really, this is a very complex issue. It's definitely not, it's definitely not a black and white matter in terms of being something that you respond to and it's immediately taken care of or that. It's just a law enforcement matter. I think that was recognized here tonight. But it is a very complex societal issue that every community unfortunately has to deal with to one degree or another. I have seen in our community as well as across the board, vagrancy issues. And really, when you talk about the overarching issue, the reason it's complex is because there's a lot of branches that occur with, it's not just about vagrancy. It's not just about poverty. But you also have homelessness. You also have addiction. And certainly from those, another branch out on many occasions can be criminality. And certainly, that's where law enforcement comes into play. But overall, a lot of these are, they're not singular issues. They're all intertwined. And that's what makes it such a complex social issue because of the existence of all these layers of problems. And many times, they are, they're not problems that occurred overnight. They are problems that are longstanding. Sometimes they're even generational. Especially when you talk about things like addiction and other types of issues like that. I have heard that some say that the police refuse to do anything about these issues and that we don't listen when folks express their concerns to us. And that's just simply not true. Because it's such a complex issue, we play a role in addressing these problems. Certainly, the criminality aspect of these problems, but not the totality of the problems. We are a seat at the table of all your various social service agencies, government agencies, as well as community organizations. It truly is, as Becky says, it truly is a village. And it is a multifaceted problem that requires a multifaceted solution. I've heard me say that a lot of times about the drug issues that we face in our community, and this is no different. These types of situations are something that you would never arrest your way out of. That will never solve the problem. In fact, there's some advocates out there that say that multiple arrests or aggressive arrests actually make it worse in terms of the overarching problems. Again, that's just one point of view. But back to the point of the police response, we have made a wide variety of arrests in the downtown area, Jawbone Park area, certainly as part of a reextension of the downtown area over these past months and years as these problems have presented themselves to us as we've received these calls, made these investigations. And police action can be taken when and if a crime occurs. And part of what I wanted to talk about was the distinction between criminality and non-criminal things. Because a lot of the calls we get, people think are illegal or people think we should do something about. And there's just simply not a law that addresses those. So I wanted to also distinguish those as I talk about the arrests that we've made. Because certainly, we've responded to the complaints that involve criminality. When there's been evidence of a crime, when we are able to prove that a certain person committed a certain crime, certainly, we've taken action. And we've seen that with a variety of these types of arrests. This list that I'm about to share with you can generally be considered in order of prevalence in terms of how often we deal with these things, from most often to least often. So the variety of arrests that have been made in the downtown Jawbone area, again, over these past months and years, are things like trespassing, disorderly conduct, public intoxication, possession of controlled substances, destruction of property, larceny, indecent exposure, contributing to delinquency of minors, and littering. All these charges have been leveled at various individuals who have committed these crimes in the downtown area, again, over the past months and in the case of some of the crimes on down the list over the past few years. Certainly, when these occur, an officer can make a charge. But what is challenging with a lot of these charges is that many of them are not jailable. When you make a charge against somebody, for instance, like trespassing, which is probably one of the more prevalent issues and certainly a lot of the recent complaints that I have taken of an individual or a couple of individuals sleeping in hallways or be on downtown on different occasions, we've got them on people's front porches. We've leveled charges of trespassing against them. They either don't show up to court, don't pay a fine, and it just becomes a revolving door. And we are bound by the law. That's what a lot of folks don't understand. We can't just with somebody wait in jail if it's not a jailable offense. If it's something like trespassing that doesn't provide a penalty of incarceration, they don't show up on it and it becomes that revolving door, we are bound by what the law allows us to do. And certainly, we do that. Beyond that, I mentioned there's a lot of complaints, a lot of calls that we get that are not criminal. Not criminal. And a lot of it becomes, it looks bad. And I will be the first to agree. Yes, a lot of these calls, a lot of these situations do look bad. It's a terrible situation to find in our downtown area. And again, I speak from experience from my own neighborhood seeing these things. But again, we're bound by the law. If there's not an existing statute that allows us to charge someone with violation of criminal or conduct, criminal conduct, we can't make a charge. And so some of those things would include, that are non-criminal, homelessness. Homelessness in and of itself, sleeping on the streets, sleeping on a bench, is not illegal. And in a lot of these cases, and I know there's been studies that have been done here over the last few years. And it's, a census was tried to, was conducted to try to gain an exact number of homeless in our community. And I know that number varies depending on the study that you look at. But in a lot of cases, the folks that you see that are lingering about, oftentimes, especially in warmer weather, you'll see them sitting at Jawbone Park. There's a handful of people that you can set your watch by them. As soon as, or even just before the sun comes up, they'll sit at a bench or at a picnic table in Jawbone Park, and they will literally sit there the entire day until night. A lot of those folks are not homeless. That's just, they just loiter. They sit idly by. Some are, right? But I'm not saying it's any one extreme. We do have homeless in our community, but a lot of folks we see also are not homeless as well. They do things like what we see in Jawbone Park and just lay idly by. Also, non-criminal, vagrancy in and of itself. Vagrancy and homelessness often go hand in hand. Poverty. Poverty is not and should not be criminalized. Begging or soliciting. We used to get complaints about people who would stand at the corner of the courthouse or people who would stand out at sheets tracking a lot of the crowd that comes and goes from Walmart with signs begging for money. And there would be calls for us to do something about that. It looks bad. It may look bad, but just because something looks bad doesn't always mean, and especially in this case, that it's illegal. Begging and soliciting is not a crime. Being high in and of itself is not a crime. Possessing the drug is, but being under the influence of drugs in and of itself is not. Unless it becomes something that would cross the boundary into disorderly conduct. We've had people who have been under the influence of drugs who scream out and they're disorderly. At that point, you can address a disorderly conduct issue. The way the code is written, an individual who's acting in disorderly conduct, they have to be warned to stop first. You can't just arrest them on that. They have to be warned first, and then if they persist, then they can be charged with disorderly conduct. So again, we're bound by the law and the processes that are set forth statutorily. Drug addiction is not illegal. It's not illegal to be addicted to drugs. It's a problem. It's a social issue. It's illegal to possess drugs. It's illegal to sell drugs. It's illegal to manufacture drugs. But it's not illegal just to simply be high. It's not illegal just simply to be addicted. And again, that is a much larger issue that is intertwined with a lot of these larger social issues that are overarching with the various criminality that I discussed earlier. Sitting or laying on benches is not illegal. I've had calls about individuals who would sit on a bench or lay on a bench during the daytime. Do something, do something, do something about this individual. They're not committing a crime. The best I can do in that circumstance is offer them help. Sometimes they want help. Sometimes they do not want help. And sometimes they can't get help. What I mean by that is when we seek help through, and that's really what plagues us when it comes to help, whether it be addiction, homelessness, any of these societal overarching issues, is a general lack of resources for not just our area, but really our whole state. If you look at, if you just look at the available shelters in West Virginia, the list is very small all throughout the state of West Virginia. So the state generally lacks resources, and that contributes to the issue. It just becomes a vicious circle at that point. But when we are able to find help, help in the form of shelters, of homeless shelters, comes from either a location to the east of us in Elkins or north of us from Clarksburg and points north. It's dependent on a number of things. One, it's dependent on whether or not they have available beds. Sometimes that's the case. Sometimes it's not the case. It's also dependent on whether or not the individual will follow the rules. The one person that comes to mind, talking about the call of a lady sitting on the bench on Main Street. It looks bad. It's a bad look for downtown. She's literally just sitting on a bench on Main Street with a bunch of her belongings and bags, not committing a crime. I asked if she would like to have shelter. She actually said yes. A lot of times, they say no. But she said yes in this specific instance. So I checked with Elkins. It was the closest spot. Elkins would not admit her because they had trouble with her in the past. Apparently, she had been, had used that facility in the past and there had been some issue and they remembered her and would not accept her. So my next alternative was to check with Clarksburg. Clarksburg could not take her. They were full. I went all the way to Morgantown until I could finally find a place that A, had beds, and B, didn't know her. So they didn't deny her. So I had one of our officers drive all the way to Morgantown to place this lady in shelter. She is back in Buchanan. Again, on the streets, we've dealt with her again, and it seems like it's become a revolving door. Bicycles, backpacks in and of themselves are not illegal. We have heard the complaints. The folks in the community have seen bicycles and backpacks involved with the drug trade. And while that's certainly the case, that's not the rule. It doesn't mean every bicycle and backpack you see inherently is illegal. We have to have a reason. If we believe they are committing a crime or involved in some type of criminal activity, we have to have a reason to stop them. We can't just stop them because we think they're doing something illegal. We have to have reasonable articulable suspicion to believe that they have either committed a crime or in the process of committing a crime or are about to commit a crime. Those are the rules that are laid before us by case law. We're bound by the law. Individuals that act strange, that's another very common call that we get. We've had individuals that, not so much as the individuals who cross over into the disorderly category. Certainly, if they're screaming, they're causing public alarm, maybe boasters or threatening behavior. Certainly, that crosses into the realm of disorderly conduct, and we address that as the statute is written. Short of that, there's a lot of people that aren't acting disorderly but are acting strange enough that it has, and has gotten an individual's attention enough to call the comm centers. If they're in medical distress, certainly, we can address that. We can seek a part of getting help for them in addition to what limited resources we have. Also includes medical when appropriate and when necessary. We could seek that if that's an issue. A lot of times, it's not. They're simply either talking to thin air. You may see that. Somebody sitting on a bench or down in Jawbone Park, they're talking to thin air. They're talking to somebody that's not there. A recent call that we got on an individual, and we've had two, three, four calls on this individual all about the same thing. Because he'll be walking down the street and will suddenly drop to his knees and start praying on the sidewalk. That's not illegal. We can't arrest him for doing that. We can check on his condition to see if there's a medical emergency or any type of assistance that we can give him. But beyond that, if it's denied or not needed or not wanted, we're limited on what our response is. When it comes to addressing minor offenses, officers have very often tried to use community policing and discretion and not instantly, as they say, throw the book at somebody. Obviously, if it's somebody who is a repeat offender or somebody that discretion is not or has not worked for in the past, then it would more often rise to the level of seeking a charge when and if that is applicable. But in a lot of situations, officers do try to use discretion and community policing. And that's with all our actions. I'm just trapped. I know we talked about that in traffic a lot of times, but that really extends to all of our interactions to, we don't. Discretion is a tool used by law enforcement to not put up walls between them and the community. That's really the last thing that we want to do. So that's a lot of reasons why discretion is used. I recognize that it has its limits, that there are circumstances that don't call for that. And certainly, I believe by and large that our officers distinguish one from the other. Officers also keep a list of services when it comes to, again, these overarching issues of addiction and the need for rehabilitation. Certainly, part of that also very much included is mental health. There are a lot of mental health issues and mental illness that individuals suffer from. Some cross into criminality, some do not. Again, the distinction that I try to make between what we can and cannot do. We do keep a list of services that involve all of our community resources, whether it be mental health or rehabilitation. So when it comes to addressing whether or not help is wanted or needed, we also have this list of resources that we can access and share with the individual who wants that. Sometimes they do. A lot of times, they do not. Each of those resources that I talked about, though, shelters, rehab, mental health, medical, I said, we are a seat at the table. We are part of the solution, but not the total solution. Each of these resources also have a seat at the table. They are also, have a stake. They are stakeholders in addressing the problem. We try to be proactive in our policing efforts, some of which was just mentioned by Becky about the security checks. This is something that we've done one and off over the years for trying to revisit this on a more formalized approach. The way it works, we don't check every business every night. It's randomized. We keep a list of different businesses. Right now, we have four or five lists. I think there's maybe 20 or 30 businesses on each list. So it's about 100, maybe a little over 100 businesses. I'm certain that's not all of them. These are the businesses that we've been in contact with, the businesses that have reached out to us that want to be on these lists for us to check. Again, it's randomized. It's separated, and it's done at different points of the week, different times of the night, different places in town. So whereas one or two businesses on Main Street may have our blue, I think you mentioned this on your door, our blue security check card. There may be others that don't, okay? And that's either because it wasn't on our list that night or we don't have it on our list. And if there's any business out there that would like to be on this list that is not sure if they are or not, please reach out to me and we'll make sure that we include you in this rotation. We go all over town. It's not just downtown. We're all over the corporate limits of Buchanan, checking all of the businesses in the various parts of the city of Buchanan. These cards are often left. Part of the instruction is to, did you say it was hanging on one of your door? I really like them to place it under your door or in your door so it's not so conspicuous. So. Yeah, that's good to know because I really like the officers to place it where it's not so conspicuous. There's places on there for an officer to leave a note. I know recently, the officer conducting a security check over the weekend found a potential security issue with one of the businesses relative to access to the business. And so he left a note offering a suggestion for how they could better secure that and left the, left the blue card at their business. So this is just our way of, again, being proactive. One good thing about this is, is not only is, does, I think it helps get peace of mind. I've heard from a lot of businesses that like to find these on their door. But it gets the officer out of the car. It gets them to familiar with the business. They, where the ingress and egress is, they know where the lights on, they just get more familiar with the business. I really like that aspect of getting out of the car and doing that. And so going and so getting out of the car, it can also lead to other things. One thing that occurred also beyond the note that was left at a different location, an officer encountered drug activity while he was conducting security checks near the business. He was able to address it and make an arrest for possession of a controlled substance. So again, certainly, a reactive response to a proactive method. We do plan on conducting more foot patrols and bike patrols. On many of the occasions throughout the year, particularly, excuse me, when there are larger gatherings, we certainly use this tactic at things like festival Fridays, festivals, just larger events. We'll assign foot patrol details. We want to get into a system to where we're doing that regularly. Certainly, not something that will occur all day, every day. We just don't have the manpower to do that. I wish we did. I really do. I see the value in that. Been to cities where there are foot patrols or larger cities, you know, a lot more people. But there definitely is a much more of a peace of mind when you see that, experience that firsthand. So I do appreciate the proactive nature to these types of patrols. We do have a plan for, again, getting into a regular, yet randomized approach to both foot and bike patrols. Bike patrols have been used to get us out of, not just the downtown area, but also residential areas. I really like their usage at the walk trail and our city parks as well. And again, it just, it's fostered, it helps generate that peace of mind. And again, it just it's fostered, it just it helps generate that peace of mind and fosters that interactivity that is truly community pleasing. Right now, we are challenged with our manpower just simply because a quarter of our staff, three of our 12 officers are in the police academy training. And so that's limits us in terms of being as proactive as we can because we're covering we're covering shifts and we're working the cases that come up during those shifts. So it does limit us, but fortunately we're nearing an end to that or we'll be back up to full staff and we'll be able to enact a lot of these proactive patrols. We also have an officer who's assigned full time to a drug task force. And again, he's limited in his full time capacity right now because he is needed for at least part of the week to cover the schedule. So he's working the road part of the time, but still dedicating part of his time to the task force and focusing on drug activities. That's a lot of juggling he's doing right now. He's managing that pretty well. But fortunately, when we're finished with training, which will be done here in the next couple of months, he'll be able to be assigned full time back to the task force. He has a lot of irons in the fire. I review his cases regularly. We review them in reality as a member of the task force board throughout the region. So I know there's a lot of moving parts, there's a lot of wheels in motion and a lot of irons in the fires, I said, and a lot of good work being done. However, there's always more work to do and the task force officer, again, when he's full time, dedicates all of his efforts exclusively to dealing with these issues. Steps to protect yourself. We oftentimes will put on seminars. This was a large focus of our citizens' police academy. Over the courses I mentioned over the last six weeks, we had a self-defense segment. We had a personal protection segment. We also provide these types of tips to various groups in the community. And these are some of the things that we share in terms of protecting yourself and making sure of that. And I share these with my own family. I've had this conversation with my wife on the concerns about our neighbors, our children when they go off to college and where they go off to other places. The first thing that we always recommend is the practice of what's known as target hardening. Target hardening is is just that you are you are taking steps to make it more difficult or and this applies to you as an individual or your property, okay? These same tips apply to both. You were taking steps to minimize the chance of you being a victim or your property being broken into or stolen or damaged. And that could be a number of things. I know I've had this conversation with with some folks, especially in the downtown area regarding trespassing issues. Securing doors that lead to public access to prevent this activity from occurring in the first place. Definitely recommend that. Locking car doors. It's amazing how many folks still don't lock the car doors. Generally speaking, it's not the rule, but generally speaking, a lot of the crimes, a lot of the individuals that commit the crimes that I talked about, again, not just the downtown area, but this this list can also extend beyond our downtown area to our residential neighborhoods. But a lot of these activities occur because an individual is an opportunist. Yeah, not the rule, but in a lot of cases, and again, I'm speaking historically, I've found that the opportunist will look for the easy target. They'll look for something that is like in the case of an abandoned house that they can just easily walk into and sleep in or in the case of an unlocked door, easily unlock the door and grab cash or valuable stuff in the car. And sometimes people will leave something even as valuable as a gun or a large amount of cash in their car. Again, that's it's making it easy for that individual or for that that circumstance to be the victim of a crime. If you just take simple steps to follow target hardening, don't leave valuables in your car. Lock your car door, lock your home. You are minimizing the chance. And again, not the rule, but most individuals, human beings are creatures of habit. They're creatures of opportunity. They're looking for the fast and easy way to commit a crime. If they find something that's difficult, it's the pleasure pain principle generally will override with that. They will move on beyond the target that is hardened to an easier target. So that's one step that can an individual can take. Carry personal protection items to include pepper spray, stun guns, things like that. Would certainly recommend the carrying of that, training in that, taking a self-defense class, speaking of training. The Buchanan Police Department has officers that are trained in defensive tactics. We can and do offer self-defense classes. I love it when folks reach out to us and show an interest in that. I love to work with the community. I love to put on these seminars, especially I'm certainly proud of the self-defense class. One of our most recent classes was done for the staff at Country Roads Physical Therapy. It was very well received. Our officer goes, actually went to their facility and put on a class. And so we're happy to do that and I highly recommend that as, again, as steps to protect yourself. Certainly if an individual witnesses a crime or has evidence of a crime, call the police. It will be investigated. Reach out to us. We have a number of ways that you can reach out to us. Stop in the station. You see us out and about on the street, stop us, call us, call the comm center. Send a tip on the tip line. We have we have a telephone tip line, we have an internet tip line. If you have evidence of a crime or see a crime, certainly if you see a crime, don't leave a tip. Call the comm center so an officer can come in and investigate that right then and there. But if it's more passive, that's certainly where tips would come into place. Again, these overarching issues of vagrancy, poverty, mental health, mental illness, addiction are not just a police problem, they are social issues. We will never arrest our way out of these problems. Many offenses are not jailable. They can only receive a citation or a fine, but even with the jailable offenses, if that's the sole way that we address the undercurrent of the overarching issues, jail just becomes a revolving door. Okay, as I said earlier, this is a multifaceted problem that requires a multifaceted solution. And I think that can be said for each one of the societal issues that we face, that we unfortunately face, but there is a way forward when we do it together.
Thank you. Okay. Director of Public Works.
Can I say something?
Carefully.
Carefully?
Yes.
The I'm the I'm probably the oldest person in this room. And I remember when I was 11 years old, I lived in South Jersey outside of Philadelphia, Pattenfield. And I remember two of my buddies were both 11, all three of us were 11 years old. We took a bus from Camden, New Jersey by ourselves up to New York City. Our parents dropped us off at a diner at 6 o'clock in the morning. And we spent the whole day up at New York City, came back on a bus after the Ingamary Ohans and Floyd Patterson fight. Just three boys on a bus with the bus was full. And our changes in our society are just amazing. And I don't have any answers for Becky or Amanda, but the differences today versus when I was 11 years old, 1955, it's amazing. And I'm not sure what all the solutions are, Matt, to what you were talking about, but there are so many differences that we need to address and it's not easy to address.
Thanks, Dave. Going out of order once once again, I'd like to call upon City Attorney Tom O'Neill if he has any thoughts or any report this evening relating to the matter.
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. And I just want to endorse wholeheartedly everything that Chief Gregory said. It's a it's truly unfortunate that over the past 40 to 50 years, the court system, all the way up to the United States Supreme Court, has really tied the hands of local communities in their ability to deal with, you know, the kind of petty crimes that we're discussing tonight largely and the the sometimes great negative impact they have on quality of life in communities such as Buchanan. You know, vagrancy, again, just to reiterate the chief's point, vagrancy itself and laws related to vagrancy and loitering have been time and again struck down by courts, most often though on grounds of vagueness. And if there are ways that we can find to define and narrowly tailor city ordinances to address particular problems that we're facing, there may be a path forward. I certainly don't want to offer any false hope though. And I just want to reiterate to the council, you know, my commitment to be of assistance in in finding a path forward and and being part of, you know, finding a solution to this. I I don't know that I really have much substantively to add beyond what the chief said. He was extremely thorough and absolutely correct in everything that he was saying. But the the fact of the matter is that when when the rights of our citizens to live in a peaceful, clean and safe community are being impacted by the wrongful actions of others and whether and we're not talking about, you know, the honest poor here, we're talking about, you know, people who are who are largely bad actors. We have to find a way that would withstand the scrutiny of the judicial system. And and there are no easy answers, but that's why, you know, members of the council and those of us that are employed by the council exercise a degree of public trust to try to find the kind of solutions that that are needed for this. So Mayor, I I I wish I had solutions to offer, but I think that if we were to put some kind of, I know the the idea of a task force was mentioned earlier and I would I would jump at the chance to be a part of that effort to try to find in a collaborative fashion some means to address these, you know, truly disturbing incidences that our downtown residents and business owners are having to face through no fault of their own and they shouldn't have to deal with this problem. But I, you know, I don't know, I don't think I have anything to to offer more than that except, you know, my heart, my hands to to help with this work.
Thanks, Tom.
I guess I would ask a question. Is there any ordinance that we can enact that will assist in dealing with this issue?
Well, possibly, you know, possibly, as the as the chief said, you know, you know, loitering, vagrancy, you know, these are, the courts have tied the hands of communities like ours for a long time. Now, if we were to find, for instance, you know, a way to craft ordinances that would prohibit, you know, for instance, you know, someone I and I don't want to, I mean, let me let me just kind of spitball here for a second. You know, an ordinance that would say that the use of, you know, downtown benches is limited to a specific, you know, length of time or something like that. I mean, you know, it would have to be narrowly tailored. The problem then becomes an enforcement problem. And again, ultimately, I I go back to what the chief said in that how do you enforce this when, you know, it's like, you know, Councilman Ryan, it's like with our parking issues that we've discussed, you know, in in previous meetings. We have people that are chronic, unrepentant offenders who thumb their nose at, you know, our municipal judicial process and municipal enforcement. And we have, you know, very few effective tools to wield here. So, you know, we could, we could probably craft ordinances that would deal with with some of these problems, certainly not all of them, but but many of them. And as the chief said, a lot of, a lot of the issues are already criminal, trespassing, public intoxication, assault in some cases, you know, aggressive panhandling could rise to the level of assault in certain cases. The issue is, okay, we make something illegal that is not strictly illegal now, and then what? I mean, it's, you know, how many times, how many tickets do we write for somebody, you know, that they're just going to ignore and continue to offend? So, you know, the issue is not necessarily one of finding a finding an ordinance that would somehow fix the problem. It's it's also how do you, how do you create an enforcement mechanism that will actually change behavior? And and that's really what what needs to happen here is behavior modification. And and the law, particularly criminal laws, whether we're talking about, you know, misdemeanor offenses or felonies, is a really blunt weapon to use to change people's behavior. And but I think, you know, if this, if a if a task force was formed or a committee or whatever, could try to find kind of a multi, you know, pronged approach for this, you know, my heart goes out to the to the chief and to the department. They're not, and they're not social workers, but they have to act as, you know, social workers, you know, most days of the week. But I don't know, I hope that's responsive to your question.
Well, let's put our heads together and see what we come up with. All right. Thank you, Tom. Public Works Director, Jerry Arnold.
Good evening. I don't have a lengthy report like Matt. I can't talk that long. Start. We're working on the same projects we've been working on. I didn't prepare a report tonight because, like I said, there's there's not enough progress to really report on from last meeting. So unless there's questions from the mayor council, that's really all I've got. Dixie's here to report on the order called from Saturday. So I'll yield for her.
As we come up on our flower season.
Yes, sir.
You got my list?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Or get your mind.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Jerry. Dixie, you're up next. Welcome.
How are we doing?
Howdy.
Organized.
Yay.
So right now, March, currently in the greenhouse, my new fancy greenhouse that we actually have put together and it's really nice now. So anybody wants to come out and see it, I'm there. You're welcome anytime. So I'm currently planting seeds and transplanting, getting everything ready for the season. We'll be doing that for a few weeks and then later in April, I'll be out with Mr. Ronald Swindler, who was with me last summer. He's really great help. We'll be out to prep the beds and we'll start telling and planting the wildflower plots, which we didn't really get to last season because of the whole greenhouse not being done yet. But we will do it this year. We had a request for more sunflowers in the wildflower plot, so we'll be adding a little bit of bird feed out there as well. We have applications from two people so far. We hope to hire two to three people for this season so that we can keep our beds in check and keep them looking as nice as possible all summer long. We're going to try to attempt to keep some of the flower displays and themes with the Wamsby event that we're having this summer. So Andy informs me that a lot of the banners are going to be blue and orange. Those are kind of hard colors to find in floor culture, but I'm going to do my best in trying to incorporate a lot of blues and oranges in our Main Street displays. The spring later on this year will be replacing the dying trees in Jawbone, which we wanted to get to last summer, but every time we got the time and the people, it would rain. So we didn't get a chance to get in there and switch them out. I do have the trees, but we just need the the weather to clear up for us. I'll be growing extra baskets this year to have as a backup in case our baskets are not looking the best come time for the marching band competition in July. July is a hard month for the baskets. It's either raining or really, really hot and people will really love to see them on Main Street. So I'm going to try to have as many backups as possible for them. Jean Bennett reached out to me about helping to plant some marigolds that the second graders of Upsher County will be growing. So they'll be growing at their schools and then bringing them to town. And we alongside Brett Brooks Club will be helping them to plant throughout town with signage saying what they're doing. They call it Marigold Magic, an Upsher County second grade project. So we're excited to have them involved in the community. And then last year, we just thought we started to revitalize some of the beds throughout town. Some of them have gotten overgrown, the perennials are dying, they need to be replaced. We started that project last year down at the Riverwalk. So we're going to be continuing with that project this year and trying to update a lot of those. And that's in my list.
So Marigold Magic and the Upsher County second graders?
Second graders, yeah.
Yeah, throughout the county.
Yes.
That's great.
The new trees in Jawbone or next couple of months going in?
Yes, that's that's my goal, either May or June at the Yes, that's, that's my goal, either May or June at the latest.
What kind of trees are they?
I believe they're honey locusts, I think an oak, and I think hybrid maple varieties, if I'm not mistaken. I haven't looked at the tax recently, but they are very disease resistant, and they should do well in that environment there in Jawbone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dixie, very much. All right, last on the director list, Ambi Jenkins.
Okay, I'm going to give you some balances and then go from there. Balances for enterprise funds, February 28th, waste collection board money market and checking, $1,343,000, their savings is 70, or $58,000, plus the $64,000 CD. Next month, I'll be reporting, we've invested some of this into the CD. Water board money market and checking, $958,000, working capital savings, $874,000. Sanitary board money market and checking, $977,000, with working capital of $459,000. The stormwater fund is at $241,000. In your packet, there, the bills to be approved, ones I want to point out to you, Appalachian Roof and Sheet Medal, Labor for Roof at the Marquee at the Theater was $1,200. Broughton Sports, this was for medals for the basketball tournaments at Stalker, that was $1,295. $3,100 Bruffy Trucking for stone and sand for mixing concrete. $3,400 to EC Fleet Repair Repairs on Truck 11 and Engine 1 Fire Trucks. $1,500 George Wilson Concrete Forms. $5,300 Lowe's Paint, Lumber Drill Bits Primer Painting Supplies for the Theater. $2,200 Mount Levine, Levine Steel for the music note. Now, that was supposed to be consolidated too, by the way. Got to cut that. $4,900 RDR Utility Services Concrete for Florida Street Gateway West Sidewalks. $13,893 Scott Electric Wiring and Service Box Supplies for Electrical at Madison Street. $5,000 Silk Coat Concepts Paint Curbs for Victoria Street to Wendy's and Victoria to Marion Street. $9,800 to Trade Works for Labor at the Sidewalks and $18,000 Trade Works Labor at the Theater. $1,700 Broughton Sports and Trophies, and that's for the Stalker Basketball Award that they had. I'd mentioned before that I would be doing reports with, for Stalker and Colonial on random reports, and I did Stalker last month about this time of the month. So I'm doing Stalker again this time, this time of the month. So in their programs, their after-school program has over 100 students registered. They're also have daily attendance of 50 to 55 students who are involved with tutoring. They're being tutored and getting homework help daily. They continue to have birthday parties and room rentals every weekend, and their basketball program wrapped up on the 26th of February. It was very successful. They had 350 players, 22 cheerleaders, and 37 volunteer coaches. The Rec Desk software that we have, they have updated and implemented online credit card payments, and that's going very well. And that's going to help with this after-school and summer camp collections. And they're beginning to work on summer camp. They're getting staff ready and training ready, and the camp starts June the 5th and continues through August the 4th. Then the other thing they're working on is the kitchen upgrade. They're all going to upgrade that kitchen, and council has designated some funds for that. And the rest of my reports got to do with the budget.
While you're there, let's go ahead and talk about F3, and then we'll.
If you would indulge me just a second, would you ask Debbie Brockman to send that report?
I've got it and already gave it to Theresa.
Oh, for the board members?
Electronically.
Thank you.
Yeah, I told her to send it to them.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. F3 is the authorization for me to sign an engagement letter while we're on the subject of Stalker Youth and Community Center for a financial feasibility study by Greg Griffith and Mays. This is to not exceed $9,000, and it is a requirement for our USDA grant application that we are, Ambi, let's be on, Ambi is working on, which we thank her very much for doing that. It is a mountain of paperwork, but if we can get, you know, a nice percentage of this project back in a grant, it'll all be worth it. So I, we need your authorization, council. If you recall, last meeting, we approved a, another feasibility study, which I believe was for environment, was that environmental? Yeah, this is now for financial. So I'd entertain a motion. Thank you. And say, thank you, that was a motion by McCauley, second by Rigor, authorizing me to sign the engagement letter. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Appears the ayes have it. All right. Okay, Ambi, we will bring you back here in just a little bit for our discussion about the budget. So thank you for your report. Under correspondence and information, just a couple little things. Whistlestop Grill Letter to the ABCA Regarding a Private Caterer License Application. Morgantown Ridge Incorporated DBA Sheets for a zoning form to the ABCA. And then we have a PSA from the West Virginia Department of Transportation, Public Meeting on Transportation Needs, and that will be on April the 4th at 10:00 a.m. at the Upstate County Senior Center. While we're on the very quick subject matter of the DO, this will be the DOH, not the DOT, they are, they're in the process of studying our intersection of North Locust Street, South Locust Street, East and West Main Street. So that is the courthouse intersection over the request to take down the no turn on red. So they're studying. Everything requires a study. So, you know, I, they don't see it as a problem to take it down, but they have to study it first, so. I don't know what they're doing, but anyway, I just wanted to bring you up to speed on that. So under the consent agenda, we have the approval of the minutes for 216 and 32. We have the approval of the building and wiring permits and the approval of the payment of our bills. If there are no additions or corrections to the consent agenda, I would ask that you approve that. Motion by Rigor, do we have a second? Second by Rylands, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pam, you out there?
Yes. Aye.
Appears the ayes have it unanimously. Okay, thank you all very much. Ambi, you're back up. We have a discussion this evening, well, hopefully not too lengthy of one, but as we've been meeting over the past several weeks about our annual budget. This is the general fund, which not, is not limited to, but basically takes care of our streets, parks, administration here at City Hall, Police Department, Fire Department, Stalker Youth Center. So it's, this does not include water, sewer, or our waste departments. So Ambi, we will defer to you to walk us through the highlights, and hopefully we can get this budget approved this evening.
Okay, like you said, we've had some meetings, working sessions discussing various things. We've had all the department heads come in and present their budgets, and so I'm going to just kind of give you some optics of it. Council really already knows this, but this is more for any public that wants to know it. And I know we don't have the public with us, but if I did, I'd tell them they could come in at any time, and I will explain this budget, the details of it.
You got public there, you got public right over there.
We have experienced people over here for city budgets, so maybe we're them too. But anyway, I'm going to start out with this budget as being presented to you in the, for general fund. It's at $6,481,585. I like to always break down in a pie chart the flavor of council and where the majority of the monies go. So this chart that I always present every year kind of helps out with that. So the breakdown of those categories, of course, the largest portion is going to public safety costs, that's police and fire. That's 46% of the budget. I'll pause for a second there. There was at this time when we were discussing this, also discussions of possibly increasing the police and fire fees. So that'll be later discussions too as well. The next highest percentage in the budget is going to the street department. That's for street sidewalks and maintenance, and that's at 20, roughly 26%. Collectively, all the rest of the items in the budget are going to, 28% is going to administration, the youth center, parks, flowers, cemetery mowing, stormwater, housing, theater. For this budget, I'm only going to point out for this time that there are things built in the budget that have monthly repeating costs in them, and I won't go through all those in detail, but for outside, for this budget, things that we are going to pay for this year, outside agencies and organizations funded at $128,000. I wanted to mention too that we had originally, when we had the discussion yesterday, we didn't put in there the $5,000 extra the airport asked for, so that's added into it.
Okay.
Caught that when I was going through everything and.
Thank you.
Larger items requested that were, were not already in the budget. Engineering design for Jawbone Run Watershed, computer network upgrades, the entire computer system actually takes care of all of our departments. Security system upgrades here for City Hall. Police Department replace, replacing the mobile radios for cruisers and radios for the volunteer police. We're replacing three cruisers. For the fire department, volunteer equipment at $15,000. The life packs that have already been approved but are still on order will be paid for in this year, about $30,000. We're replacing the pickup truck that the chief normally drives, that's already approved too and is on order. The street department, we have $300,000 in there for projects and paving. We have the new skid steer attachments for the brush hog and grapple bucket. And then Colonial Theater, new seating, Brushy Fork Event Center, we did add funds in there, estimated $47,000 to take care of a part-time person. Their salary is not 47. We also have some other items in there, such as utilities and their mandatory paycheck payroll benefits. The public safety and fire training facility, we have $60,000 in there. So that's just kind of a synopsis of it all, if you think of anything the public might be interested in. Once council approves this budget, it'll be published in the newspaper, and a copy of what will be published in the newspaper is in your packet. And then just a reminder that we will also have to meet here again on April 18th, mandatory day at some point that you've declared would be the best time to lay the levy, which takes about five minutes.
And I meant to put that on the agenda for, and I didn't do it. So you're right, it has to be that day. We just need to come up with a time. We usually do it about 9:00 a.m. We, if you all want to think about giving me a head nod for that, check your calendars, we can talk about that later amongst, you know, circulate an email or two, but thank you for that reminder. April 18th is Tuesday, I believe.
Ambi, you mentioned air packs, 30 some thousand. I thought this was like 200 and some thousand.
Those are, these are different, these are life packs. They're life packs.
These are the tanks.
No. Whole different thing. He presented the life packs to you probably December earlier, but it takes 40 weeks for those to come in, so, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yep, different, different kind of piece of equipment.
Any other questions or comments relative to the budget?
I would move that we approve this budget, Mr. Guy.
I would like to do one thing, if it's okay, Mr. McCauley. I, because, I would, I would ask for you to motion to approve the budget, and I'll participate in that excluding the Upstate County Development Authority, and then there'd be a second vote, I removing myself and let the minutes show that I abstain from that because I'm the executive director of that entity. So would, would your motion be okay to approve the budget excluding?
Excluding the Upstate County Development Authority.
All right, there has been a motion on the table by Mr. McCauley there, and a second by Mr. Rylands. Again, this is the fiscal year budget 2023, 2024, take effect July the 1st of this year, excluding the $40,000 contribution of the Upstate County Development Authority for this particular vote. I'll call for the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Likes, sign opposed, motion carries. Now, Mr. Sanders, if you wouldn't mind to call for the question to, or ask for a motion to approve the line item, and I will roll back.
Yes, I'll ask for motion from council to approve a line item for $40,000 for the Upstate County Development Authority. Okay, we have a motion by Thomas and a second by Rigor. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Just for clarification's sake, that is the same annual contribution that has been allocated last several years, so no increase was requested. All right, thank you all very much, and Ambi, thank you very much, and Barb, for all of your hard work on this budget. I think we owe you a hand. You're here at nine o'clock at night putting this thing together for us, so thank you very much, and it makes this process go so much smoother.
Well, we appreciate that, but also back up just a minute. Jay's helping with the USDA level as well.
Well, we'll thank Jay tomorrow. Yeah. Okay. Next, this has been long discussed in executive session. We are ready, I believe, to come to an agreement and make a decision on this. We have a, we've had a potential property swap opportunity with West Virginia Wesleyan College. It is, is mutually beneficial for both West Virginia Wesleyan and for the city of Buchanan. And basically, just in the, in the clip notes version, we will receive the River Trail for the first time ever. We have been on a long extended gentleman's agreement lease. I believe there is something in writing, but it's been, you know, it's basically a 100-year lease that we've had with the, with the property that the River Trail sits on, so we will receive that as a city-owned entity, as well as some property that is along, is situated near the River Trail, particularly near the, where the dog park is situated, and the, what used to be a basketball court next to the boat launch. We will have some opportunity to work with the college on their former tennis courts with, to maybe come up with a pickleball court or two. I think our Parks and Recreation Board is interested in working on that. And we also have a piece of property that could be beneficial for our River Trail system at the end of Moore Avenue and where Randolph Street intersect near where Novellas is the former Moore's Business Forums property, just where Moore turns into Randolph at the end by the river. So that's a lot, that's basically what we're receiving out of this, and the college would be receiving our former city street garage located at the intersection of Factory Street and Lumber Street to use for their operations in their physical plant. I do believe that the college has some plans that they'd like to execute with transitioning their current facility into a better use for their, for their, for their plan. So if I represented that correctly?
I think you hit the eight, yeah, five one way and three the other, I think that's it.
Okay, there are some, some areas on Wood and Randolph behind where what used to be Camden Dormes, where Wesleyan owns all the property around it that are some, they're, they're not even, they're on the map that there's alleys, but there are no alleys. It's just, it's just to help them, yeah, paper alleys to help them with their, as they continue to develop field space down there. So that's, that's the, that's what we've been meeting about over the last several months in executive session, trying to get it right. So we're ready to have a full, a full vote on this. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Yes, I'm going to, I certainly support this. It's a great thing when the city and the college work together. I've been on the payroll at the college for 40 years, and I'm going to recuse myself from participating in any of it.
Okay, that's, thank you, Dave. This, the only thing I was just going to add is, is that just for the public's understanding, we are permitted to enter into executive session for two matters, property matters or personnel matters. And so this, this is what we have been working on. So with that, with Mr. McCauley's request for abstention, I would go ahead and call for that question. All those in favor of a transaction? I would go ahead and call for that question. All those in favor of transacting the swap with West Virginia Wesleyan College, please signify by saying aye.
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 Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. I don't, Thomas and.
I seconded.
And Sanders. I wasn't sure. Okay. Oh, you're welcome.
Oh, did you have?
Okay, um, so F three has been taken care of. F four, I would ask that you support my recommendation to appoint Jenny Burnside to the planning commission. Jenny is the daughter of Eric and Bebe Burnside. She lives over on Barber Street. She is a good young voice in our community, a young mother, and I think she could provide some good perspective to our planning commission. So would you support that, please?
So second.
There's a motion by CJ, a second by Mr. Sanders. Do you want to give? I'll give it to Thomas. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, and thank you, Jenny. Lastly, another thing that we have been meeting in executive session about some, and also it's been on the agenda for the last several meetings. I, I'd like to ask the council that we move forward with the assumption of the management of the event center at Brushy Fork through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. And we would reevaluate at that time to make sure that things are still moving smoothly. And if there's no reason to rough the boat, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know why we wouldn't continue. But for our trial period, I would, I would ask that we take this leap of faith and manage the, manage the event center for that time. So move.
Second.
Okay, let's give it to Pam, if that's okay.
I'm going to recuse myself.
As the owner of an event center, I'd support that. So, okay, we have a motion by Mr. Sanders. We have a second by Mrs. Buckloo. Is there discussion? Hearing the need for none, I will call for that question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Like, sign opposed. The motion carries with one abstention. Thank you all very much. Now we will begin talking about the management of it and who's going to do that. So stay tuned.
Stay tuned.
Okay, we are down to council comments and announcements. We will begin on the phone with Pam.
Um, I want to thank Ambi and everybody that got the budget together, because I know that long hours and she spends a lot of time in there, and I'm grateful, and we should be to her and everybody else. I'm glad we did, we're going to do the exchange with Wesleyan College. That should have been done a while back. And also, I'm anxious to see how we do with the event center, but I'm glad that we are going to do it like a fifteen-month trial, so that's what I have to say. That's it.
Thanks, Pam. Mr. McCauley?
Thank you. I certainly echo the other comments about Ambi and Barb and everyone that's involved in the budget process. We just passed the largest general funds budget in the history of the city at almost six point five million dollars. That's, and, and folks may be thinking out there that gee, these guys get together in a matter of two minutes, decide to spend six and a half million of our dollars. There has been weeks of examination of this stuff. We've looked at all the data that's been generated. It's not something that happens in just two minutes. It's been a couple of three-month process. So the public should know that a lot of us have spent a lot of time on this budget. Mr. Skinner, I would encourage us to, based upon the remarks of our guests, especially Amanda Hayes and Becky Westfall, let's consider a task force. Let's bring people to the table from the parish house and the Salvation Army and DHHR and people in the mental, emotional health counseling area and some drug counselors. And let's, let's, I heard, I heard Matt say, I think, two or three times in his presentation that they just have one seat at this table, and we probably have six, seven, eight other people that need to have seats at the table to really address it. I, I want to thank Amanda and Becky. It's, we take this for granted, that we show up every couple of weeks or even more often than that and address these kinds of issues. When, when people in our general populace, our public, come to a meeting like this, it takes a lot to, to maintain your composure and share something that is very highly compelling. I think, I think we can, short of fixing all of the problems, we can improve our solutions, and that's all I have.
Uh, thank you, Dave. Jack?
Well, I just agree with, and second, pretty much everything said. Chief Gregory, appreciate your response. It was genuine. As far as public policing, I know that when we owned the inn, it was not uncommon to see that blue tab on the door. They couldn't slide it under because of the strips on the bottom of the door, but, but they were there and they checked out our properties and it was appreciated. And Ambi, great job on the budget. And I patted her on the back yesterday because people don't realize only seven percent of the budget is going to administrative cost. And anytime you're under ten percent, eight percent, that's excellent. So that's a job well done. One of the things that came up, I did just some quick research this afternoon. We've talked about increasing the police fee and fire fee. The police fee is currently one dollar. The last time it was raised was nineteen eighty-two. When you take into account a yearly inflation rate of two point eight percent, what one dollar was worth in nineteen eighty-two is now three dollars and ten cents. It's raised two dollars and ten cents per dollar. The fire fee was raised in two thousand fifteen. And today, you know, that dollar from two thousand fifteen now costs a dollar twenty-six. So it's very timely to get this on an agenda and, and to get it dealt with. Our firemen deserve the best. Our police officers deserve the best. We can afford them. And, but the, the police fee is nineteen eighty-two, that's forty-one years. And well overdue for an increase. And when we look at inflation and the comparisons, you know, we're lagging way behind. And I, I really think we need to establish a system where we rotate and we look at all the different boards and all these different costs. And if we have to increase fees, we do it incrementally instead of slamming large fees all at once.
Yep.
Amen. That's all I got to say.
Thanks, Jack. Dave Thomas?
I just thank. Go ahead.
I just thank everybody for what they've done to the budget and everything and all the other comments I echo that. Good evening.
Thanks, Dave. CJ?
So for some time now, the mantra that we've used for the city of Buchanan is a safe, affordable, welcoming community where a point is made to include anyone and everyone that wants to participate. And as I listen to Amanda and Becky, and I have also personally experienced things that they're talking about downtown, the safety becomes questionable. I know that personally, my, my wife and I work kind of different hours. I'm early and she's late. So she comes to work at one or two and works to seven or eight. And now she's scared to walk to her car and going to have to move it up to the front. And I get the fact that there's a lot of agencies and, but, and I think the ones, the guys that I, that I run into don't want any help. And they are rather belligerent and they know the law. You know, when I, if I ask them to move out of the bench, you can't do that. And we have a conversation and they move on. But it's, it's something that can undo a lot of the positive things that we've done. You know, and I understand all the things that Matt pointed out, but I think somehow we have to prioritize this. And if, when you said, you know, hardening a target or a soft target, they'll move on if they feel that there's going, you know, that this person's going to give them some trouble or this. So I think anything to create that sense that we're not accommodating for this type of behavior. And, I mean, but we, you know, we found them sleeping. We found them, you know, in all different forms. I shared some videos with you from the one. We had another, that same guy came back three nights later and tried to break in, but it was locked up. So we had hardened the target, so to speak. We had put the, on all the hallways to the other apartments. Now we have combination locks, and that's all right. But, you know, it was a lot, to me, it was a lot nicer when we didn't have to lock it up. But this is the way things are going, and this is the changing. But there seems to be a lot more. And whatever we can do, I think we need to prioritize it and try to move our way forward in this somehow.
And women feel especially vulnerable.
Well, when men are harassing women, they're, they're, yeah, they feel a little more vulnerable.
Right. Thanks, CJ.
Randy? On that, on that issue, Councilman Rigor and I had had an opportunity to visit with Chief Gregory and Lieutenant Loudon, and we had an extensive conversation on this very subject. And Buchanan is blessed to have the leadership that we have at the police department, with Chief Gregory, Lieutenant Loudon. I know that we have a challenge ahead of us. And the chief made a very, very good point as a department, as representatives of the department, they have a seat at the table, but there's other folks and there's other agencies that have to have that seat at the table. And I'm very confident in the leadership that, that those two gentlemen provide for our police department. I've witnessed somewhat the progression that had been made through the Kalia program. Just on a peripheral, I was there during their first report and first, I guess it was, when, when you were certified, when you got the news, but I watched the presentations, I watched the reactions, I watched all of those things because I was helping with just setting up the go-to meetings and that type of thing. So it was a little bit of a front row seat to it, and I enjoyed watching that. I know that they're trained. I know they have the capabilities they're doing. I also know that we're fighting the calendar. We've got to get those three officers back and get them into the department. Manpower, person power, you know, is very important. We have men and women on that force that doing a fantastic job. I have confidence, in other words, that, that we will have some progress on this. It's going to take a little time. It's going to take effort. We'll have progress on this. So I'm committed as the councilman and as the city recorder to work on that as well. A bit of news came out this week too in the city of Buchanan. I've gotten to know a gentleman over the past couple of years who is very progressive. He's exciting. He's innovative. He was the interim president of West Virginia Wesleyan College for about a year. And the board of trustees very wisely solidified his position as the permanent president of West Virginia Wesleyan College. And I want to thank and congratulate Dr. James Moore, who is really embracing everything Buchanan has to offer to the advantage of West Virginia Wesleyan College. There's always that question, you know, is the city paying too much attention to the college? Is the college doing enough for the city? There's a genuine partnership there now with Dr. Moore, the mayor of this council. There's a true partnership, and we're going to see some fantastic things flourish between the campus, West Virginia Wesleyan College and the city of Buchanan. Looking forward to it. And finally, Councilman Thomas alluded to this two weeks ago, but it's going to be a really fun evening on March twenty-fifth at six PM at the Opera House. Crepe Buchanan is presenting an elimination dinner to raise money for not only Crepe Buchanan, but for WAMSB twenty twenty-three. There's some tickets available. Please participate. It's going to be a fun, enjoyable evening. You'll learn a lot about WAMSB twenty twenty-three. You'll learn more about Crepe Buchanan, have some great food, some great times. So come join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I can't add anything that the rest of you haven't already shared. I would certainly though, I would be remiss if I didn't say that, yes, things change. And none of us, as human beings, like it. But this is still a very, very safe community. It is not Little Chicago, which, which has been referenced to on social media. This is one of the safest communities in the country. Matt, crime has gone down since most of us here have been on council, as per your annual report, which, thank you for your patrolling and, and for your diligence in, in that effort. But we have great people who live here, who work hard every day to make this community what it is. And we have long seen challenges of all kinds of different subject matters that have, that have, that have presented us with opportunities to make things better. So that's what we are challenged to do this evening. But I do not, for any reason, believe that people need to be terrified of what's going on. They need to be alert. They need to pay attention. They need to be aware of their surroundings, but that is anywhere, whether it's here, whether it's in Clarksburg, whether it's in Pittsburgh, whether it's at the beach. It doesn't matter. You know, we've seen many of tragic events take place in very small communities. I'm not saying it can't happen here. I'm just saying this is a safe community, and we should all be very thankful to live here and thankful for the quality of life that we have. So with that, we'll get to work and keep on making Buchanan what it is today and even better tomorrow. So with that, entertaining motion at eight thirty-six that we adjourn.
Sure.
Thank you. Good.
This conference is no longer being recorded.